All order, is there any agenda additions or deletions? Hearing none, I'd ask for approval of the December 27th minutes.
So moved.
As accepted, taken.
Alright, is there any corrections or deletions to that? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Road Commissioner, do you have a report before you have to get out and sand?
No, I guess we've been on the road multi-times and all the snow and the ice, or all the ice, not much snow. Rain. Kind of concerned about tired roads, what they're gonna look like in the spring with the freezing and thorn, but it is what it is.
But do you have any questions for the Road Commissioner?
I just was talking a few minutes about it, but I did have a question on my way over earlier today. A truck was backed up into the, getting some sand or whatever, on this spot. But as they drove away, they had a big ol' hopper in the back of that thing for spreading sand. Even with that, are town people are allowed to do something like that? I don't know if the guy is...
That's why I wasn't meant for that.
Right. I don't know if he's doing it as a business.
How are we gonna police it? Hopefully they're using it for personal.
I didn't get a license plate to find out if he was at least local. I mean, like, Clarendonite.
I think that what we said when we talked about it last time was as long as it's within reason. I know it says five gallon pails, but I also realize that some of these people have bigger driveways in town might have some of those small... I mean, if they're loading a commercial sander, we got problems. You know, I think that's something that, it's a good thing that it's here because we can monitor that and see if they're loading commercial sanders, but...
Red truck?
Yeah, it had, right, it was like a little hopper attached to the back of the truck. It wasn't a commercial...
Probably more of a residential.
Wasn't one like Dave Stern has, for sure.
He's got the regular...
I think the best thing is, I mean, the girls are here and the, I think we just gotta monitor it, just keep an eye on it. If it, if we get into a situation where we have commercial sanders getting loaded, then we got problems. And we'll have to address it.
Clamp down, yeah.
But I, I haven't seen that. I don't know if anybody has, but I haven't seen that happening.
I haven't seen a commercial one, no.
No, I haven't.
Not looking at that.
I haven't seen the guy with three or four pails, but hey, that's what we said.
That's what I have, like, in the back of my truck. Two pails went on over, then I built a wood frame so that they stay weighted over the tires. And they're probably the same as a five gallon bucket, each one of those you've seen. It gives me traction, also allows me to sand the hilly part of the driveway. Anything else? Anybody have any more questions of the Road Commissioner? Cash, you have anything else?
Oh, what was that?
We have no guests tonight. Obviously, no public comments. Oh, business, Mill River Union withdrawal discussion. Over the months that we have been dealing with this, one of the things that we did discuss was the possibility of withdrawing from the union if our voices weren't heard. And it seemed like at that time, that was the case. However, when Bob and I went to that school board meeting where there were a lot of people in opposition to their policies, we did not talk about flags and everything else. We talked about the one lack of communication between the school board and the Town of Clarendon. The next thing we talked about was the responsibility of the school board or the state to inform the select board that they had changed the law, saying that the select board had no authority to appoint someone to fill a term until the next election. And we made that point pretty clear, that we were not happy with that. The third thing, of course, was the suggestion that we may consider asking the voters of the Town of Clarendon if they want to withdraw from the district. And we did say that we hadn't got all the information back yet from the questions that we had asked to the state relative to what the process would be. After we found out what the process is, and just so to let the voters who checked this out on PEG TV, we would have to have a special election. And then the other towns in the district or the union would have to have a special election to allow us to leave the district. And if that were to happen, then the state would come in and they would look at what the finances would be tax-wise and everything else. And if they, to our understanding, if they weren't satisfied with the fact that taxes would be enough from the other towns, then they would say no. So there's three hoops that we would have to jump through anyway. So rather than, in my opinion, rather than pursuing this any further, the voters in the Town of Clarendon initially, by a big margin, voted to form the district. So for me, then that tells me that this is what the wishes were of the voters. So as a five-member board, I think that rather than keep this ongoing, and personally, I think it would interfere with the students because will we still have a union, will the school be here, and all these kind of things. I think that we should say, we did our best, we did all of our information gathering. And I think at this point, I would say that we have, and I think Katie can answer this, we have had better lines of communication from the school board. And there are changes right now happening in the school board. So I think that with those changes happening and with the detailed information that we do get from the school board, I think at this time, this select board should not consider putting an article based on all those facts that I just gave. What do you think, Rick?
Well, I think that when that union formed, which was what, early seventies?
No, was it?
Late, later than that, was it, or earlier?
Yeah, no.
Later.
It was, uh...
That's around seventy-four, when the first graduating class, was it?
Yeah, but that was not the union as it exists today. That was a...
That's what I'm getting at. That was not the union that exists today. And I think the, there were some promises made way back then that were impossible to keep because of, you had to know that changes every year are gonna, were a little different. But at any rate, rightly so, we didn't have much control over that. But I still think that the people of this town should speak. And I think the people of this town should let us know if they want us to try this. Granted, I don't think it's a winning battle because I believe at the end of that, it's the state that decides anyway. And I doubt if the state will let us pull out. We do pay a pretty penny in taxes for that. But I still think the voters should...
Allow me, allow me to jump in. Cash, are you going out to do the snow?
Yep.
Alright.
You want the five of you to sign off on the election warrant?
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion that we suspend our discussion on the MRU withdrawal and immediately go to the 2022 warning to have approval prior to Cash's leaving for the road?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion that we go ahead and approve the 2022 town meeting warning. Specifically with the main thing that we normally add to our motion is that Article II contained the number $1,107,298.45 to be raised in taxes for the next fiscal year, which is not any increase from last year.
That's not including the people that put their stuff in the...
Correct. No, that's just our taxes. So again, I know I've already made the motion, I know nobody seconded it, but... Bears, bears, bears reiterating to our voters who are watching this, the Town of Clarendon is putting forth a neutral budget, which is not going to raise taxes in the coming year. It does decrease our fund balance, which needed to happen anyway, but so...
If you want to second on that, I'll second it.
Anybody else have any comments?
Yes.
We all have to sign it.
That's at the local level, not the...
Correct.
Whatever the education is.
Correct. No, we can't, yeah. We say that every year, this is the local municipal budget, which we have control of, but we can't do anything about what the state's gonna do for school.
Alright, so all those in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And of course, we all have to sign it, so let me, and then I'll pass this down to Cash real quick. Cash, on that other discussion, do you have any comments relative to...
No, well, I love that I heard, I kinda echo what Rick was saying about the voters and stuff. And... We're talking about withdrawing, right?
Not withdrawing.
Letting it, letting it play out.
Letting it play out, yeah.
I'm good with that.
I just wanted to get your comment on the air before you left.
Just to finish up, I'd like to say if there ever comes a time when the town wants to do that, let us know, and we'll try to jump through the hoops.
What I'd do, are we gonna loop back to that discussion then now?
Yes.
Bob, you signed on my line.
What did you sign on their line?
Yep.
Sorry about that, Robert.
Nope, it's fine.
Put some arrows.
Yeah. Or do you have some whiteout? We'll white it out.
I knew I shouldn't have hurried it to get here.
If we're back on MRU, I will actually go ahead and make a motion that we drop this discussion from the 2022 warning, which actually we just approved, so we now know it's not gonna be in it. And I would echo what Rick has said and say that does not say that if in the coming year there is citizens out there that would like to have this picked back up, I would like to see, you know, if there is a following for that, I'd like to see a petition. Somebody, you know, if they wanna present us with a petition, that's absolutely, you know, appropriate. But for right now, from my seat, I would say we move on from it for now. I think there's been a lot of changes just recent that have happened. And I think we need to see, let's put it this way, from my perspective, this board accomplished its goals in the last year. That's my opinion, so...
The three goals that we had stated in the...
Yeah, yeah, and I think not only that, I think this board felt very strongly about the people of Clarendon's voice being heard in elections. And I think we also made that very clear and had that happen as well. So I think that there's no doubt where the select board stands currently, is my opinion.
The other thing that we were advised at, we would have to check with lawyers, given that, what do you mean by a non-binding article?
Correct. That gets, that gets sticky.
Right, and so that is an issue. So to your point, with anyone submitting a petition, that petition would likely as not be dedicated to, we want to remove ourselves from the union.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I think that, again, currently with where we stand, I think we've seen a lot of things come about in the last six to twelve months. And I think that, again, we made ourselves clear. I think that the special election was very clear in what we wanted to see happen as well. And from there, I think, I think right now, we need to give it some time. And again, if there's citizens out there who want to see some action in the next year...
We can't do anything till after July 1st.
Correct.
Anyway, that's what the state told.
So, so, you know, if for some reason something was to come up for next town meeting, certainly the citizens are willing and able to put forward a petition.
Exactly.
So... I had a motion that we not engage any further, no pursuit of this discussion at this time.
And I will second that.
Okay, and Cash was very much in favor of the same thing. He said that before he left. So if we wanna put that in here, but... Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Let's make that unanimous, because he did. The hell is this?
I'm not sure, yeah. I think that's a part of your cemetery discussion.
Got it right.
Wanna let that dry a little bit more?
You should be, you should be able to sign it.
I sounded like Rick has to sign it. Alright, new business, Vermont E-cycle contract renewal. That's in the poll or something, please.
Let's see, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that you sign the E-cycle renewal contract on behalf of the select board.
I'll second for that motion.
I'll second for discussion, that is with the same organization.
Oh, let's see.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's who I get emails from all the time.
That's different, weren't we using, I thought Goodpoint was doing it. It's all one entity, okay.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion on behalf of the board that you sign the DMV record request authorization for the administrative assistant.
Is there a second? I got you. Where the hell is that?
Right in front of you.
This?
Yep.
There's no place, oh, yes, there is, right here.
Alright, all in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
And just while you're signing it, it's authorization for the administrative assistant to keep pertinent CDL records on behalf of the road crew in, on file. That's what it's authorizing, which is part of state statute.
Okay, here again, approved the 2022 election warning.
Which we already did.
Yeah, but if we wanna do that formally in this, or just to...
I was gonna say, we already did it and it's signed, so...
Okay. Cemetery committee purchase approval.
So I can present that on behalf of Kevin Peck. They have, well, Kevin has requested to purchase a rope, I think, for dropping trees and moving stones. And that was his quote, I got.
So it's five-eighths by one hundred and twenty, probably nylon, I don't know.
It's heavy duty. He came up and spoke to me while I was at work.
It's a hundred and seventy-three dollars ninety-five cents. Anybody wanna make a, yeah?
To see if the road crew had anything like that that he could use instead of purchasing something new. And they don't currently have that. So Cash, and in speaking with Cash and myself, we recommended that he get some quotes and present it to the board and ask for permission to purchase. There is money available in the cemetery budget for that.
Make a motion that we authorize the cemetery committee to purchase the rope that they're in need of for various projects.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright. Heidi, do you have anything you'd like to bring up?
I'm just thankful that we have concluded the budget process for this year to have a budget to present to the voters in March. And the internal auditors are scheduled to meet, I believe, on the 25th to put together, start putting together a town report for the voters. Processing WQ's 1099s in my office at this time. Busy time of year, calendar year-end, budget, elections, yeah.
Stuff.
Yep, but that's all I have.
Then good job on getting this efficiently done. Sometimes the select board, huh, what are we doing? But I think you did a good job and appreciate that. And I hope the people in Town of Clarendon appreciate the fact that you did this good work. Katie?
I received a call this morning that there is a dog nuisance, I guess, on Knight's Drive. And it's been kind of ongoing, but this is the first time I've heard about it. So I directed them to contact the Sheriff's Department, and I called the office as well. I just, so let me you know this in case there's any additional follow-up later on. So, that's all I have.
Did those folks, when you suggested, you know, the Sheriff's Department is the dog wardens in town?
Yeah.
Did they accept that? I mean...
Yeah, he said he would contact Sergeant Cross.
Any questions for Katie or Heidi? Bob, do you have any concerns?
No, I think I'm good, just to reiterate what you said about the treasure, the fine work that's been done getting our budget together.
I have nothing else.
I should've brought it up while Cash was here, so he can throw something at me later. There's been a couple times, actually, to both Heidi and I, that it's been brought up about the possibility of renaming 7B particularly to the north in the village. I know that that road is now ours. I don't know if it is something the board wants to look into. I'm not sure where we stand on E-911 on that, 'cause I believe it's 7B North, I think is how...
I think it's the way it's...
7B North or 7B South, I think is how they're worded. It was an individual who has some specific concerns because apparently some delivery services for very important medical supplies have been turned around, have not found and not, there's been some issues with getting deliveries. And it's been worrisome. So doing my duty to bring it up to the board, I don't know if it's anything we wanna pursue. I'm not sure, I know that we had various issues with E-911 in that area, probably around the time you started, Katie, 'cause I think it had to do with Garvey going in there. And, and this is the other side of the river, obviously, this is not, this is, it's kind of that stub up the other way. I also don't know what E-911's stance on it is. Maybe, maybe the first step is to have Katie reach out to them and find out, is everything hunky-dory up there or not? I also know that we run into situations where residents get a little excited when their roads change names and mail has to be changed and all that, so I, I don't know. I'm bringing it up, 'cause like I say, it's been brought up to me, so...
Now, was a question that was asked of you, actually on the north side of the bridge, or is it the...
It's on the south side of the old bridge.
Okay.
It's, it's the village from, it's basically the section from where North Shrewsbury Road connects in up to the, up to, yeah, the corner there where the shops are, up to the bridge abutments, basically.
Pleasant Road, I believe they call it?
Uh, seven, well, seven...
But Pleasant Road is down there by the same area.
Oh, the side road, yeah, this is specifically on 7B though. This is right on the street.
Wasn't that originally with 911, 7B North, 7B South?
And 7B Central. And that's, I think, the...
I think that's where it still is, but I'm not...
And I think that's the confusion. I think the confusion is there's multiple names for 7B. I think that that's, and again, what we're talking about, I'm not talking about 7B, you know, from like Burns up the other way. That's not ours. I'm talking about this would specifically impact us, you know, our, our portion. And again, I guess the, the board's gonna weigh whether or not they even wanna do anything. But again, I'm doing my diligence, a citizen has brought it up, bringing it to the board.
And I think it's correct, let's have Katie double-check with 911, see just where they stand on this.
I thought we renamed North where the, 'cause I think the section I'm talking about is technically 7B Central.
No, 7B Central is from Mike's Country Store 2103.
Okay, so that's the other section, so this would be 7B North.
7B North is...
Is what, okay.
But we did have a discussion, and I can't remember if we done them or not, when Garvey...
Correct.
Was moving in up there.
And I, and again, I don't know if that got renamed or not. I don't, I don't think we ever actually named it something different.
I don't think so, but I'm not sure, 'cause there was a discussion regarding it.
The bigger discussion wasn't actually the road, it was the turnarounds.
Correct.
Right there. That, and the fact that it was designated a wetlands. Do you remember that?
Well, there was issues with where they were building and they had to build around, yeah. But, but there, there was issues with their mailing address, and they didn't want it to be 7B North, like this long. They were asking for it to be something simple. You know, and I don't know, again, if you're gonna rename it something, the question is, what do you rename it? Do you re, you know, and it's not a true through road because the bridge isn't there anymore.
Right.
So, you know, you gotta discuss what you're gonna do. I mean, Village Road makes sense, there's any number of things, 'cause that's certainly Clarendon Village. But you, you gotta decide if we're gonna do something, what are we gonna do?
Well, the first step, of course, is get some information, probably from the post office would be a good place to find out too, because obviously, they deliver mail there.
So what would you like to know specifically, if it can be changed?
Well, I guess, are there any issues, from their perspective, are there any issues with those names? They're pretty faithful about bringing us problems, so I can't ima, I mean, I don't know, I...
Yeah, I'm pretty sure when Janet was working for the town, she had conversations with Tyler specifically about these. And I'm, I'm pretty certain that I remember her sending out for the board a letter to the homeowners that were near Garvey's in that section, asking them if they were interested in it being renamed. But I don't think she received any response. The only reason it sticks out to me is because she sent it out on April 1st, and she thought that maybe folks thought it was an April fool's joke.
Well, I think the thing is, is let's, let's start by talking to 911. And let's see, I mean, Bob, you live up there, you know a lot of people in that area. Is this, yeah, what's, what level of concern is there? What level of, you know, that, I'd like to know that, too.
I have not really heard nothing particular, other than the biggest thing that I run into up in that area is the truckers coming in looking for the cabinet shop.
Okay.
You know? What, what they do is they come in, they'll come, they'll come down, they hang a left rather than a right. But that's, that's not to say there isn't other problems that I haven't heard about, but I'll, I'll keep an ear peeled.
I would keep an ear, yeah.
See what come up with. See what come up with.
Rick, do you have any, where else is that? And at this point, I-
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?